And to the Republic for which it stands, all nation, I'm a individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody. That's our business on here was to set next meeting date. Now, normally, we meet on the first and third Wednesday, because that's still
Yep.
what we're looking at, so the date would be
March twentieth.
March twentieth. We don't need to motion that, because that's when we normally meet, right?
The normal one, yeah. I just figured that would get the word out.
Okay. So the next meeting date will be our regularly scheduled week of March twentieth.
Even?
Hey, Peter.
Sorry to keep you waiting, my kitchen clock is wrong.
Oh.
Oh, okay.
What happened? Power outage, I guess.
National grid.
It's five minutes slow, right?
Anyway.
All right, we're up to, uh, regular business, number, item number four.
They already started.
Yep. Oh, we did the pledge, so he just...
All right, well, all right, first item on the agenda is to review, discuss an act on seven fifty-seven William Street.
There is a, uh, memo, I guess, if you will, from, uh, Town Administrator, the guy in seven fifty-seven Williams. So. Can I see a copy of that? You didn't get it off me?
No.
Carrie, could you run a copy of this? You have a copy of this, right?
That's his original site plan.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so you just were lacking the note of, the note from the Town Administrator.
So, we had a site plan back in November.
Correct.
And we approved it, we, with no conditions.
Correct.
So, why are we here now?
Because when I went to the selectmen, the selectmen put conditions.
Okay.
Which forced me to come back here.
Okay.
The three things that she has here that I have to get a building permit. To keep it mixed use. This is just what I used to scale it all out. Looks like now it's separate.
Where did you get this paper?
My side up. It was easy. This is what I'm looking to do. Looking to get a two thousand square foot building here. The mobile home is going to stay residential. Right now, the mobile home is being used temporary. It doesn't comply. So, to comply, I need to put up a new building. I need to have it handicap accessible with a handicap bathroom. Those are the artists from the town of Dyke. The concerns with the neighbors of it being all commercial. So, I'm going to leave the mobile home, so it's mixed use. So, we got the residential part, the business part, my house is going to be.
How close is that to your house, Paul?
Uh, probably hundred feet, seventy-five to hundred feet.
Just curious.
So. I'm trying to keep the, the commercial in between my two residential properties.
What are the setbacks?
The setbacks, this is eighty feet.
From where?
From the center of the road.
Okay. From the property line?
Yes.
Because you're subdividing that, right?
No. It's mixed use. The land's going to stay as one. It's just mixed use, this will be residential, this will be for the commercial.
Do you have the bylaw about mixed use handy, Michelle?
Michelle?
Oh, Michelle.
I'm Carrie.
Sorry.
Carrie, Michelle.
George.
Michelle is like attorney I've been dealing with all day at work, sorry.
That's fine, that's fine.
AU is probably better.
AU is hard to do. So you want the, um,
Yeah, isn't there?
The definition, basically?
Aren't there percentages of, of, um, living space to, to business space in our bylaw regarding mixed use?
I don't believe that there is. I have another question.
I don't remember.
I'm just thinking of adding two buildings in the same lot.
So I'm not adding, I'm adding one. Mobile homes are here.
How many square feet is this lot here?
The lot is, uh, is twenty-seven thousand. Twenty-seven thousand three hundred ninety-two.
So that doesn't meet the
The lot size.
Meet the lot size for a single-family home.
No, but this mobile home has been here since nineteen fifty's.
Yeah, so that it just, uh...
Well, so, I think it would need a variance at this point.
Well, the, the other option I would think is if you were to put that building attached to the mobile home, I think that would be a different start.
Yeah, that's, I think, uh, mixed use requires that the building be, half of it is
That's not true.
I don't know, that's why I'm
There is plenty in Dyke in that before mixed use came in
We're not talking about before, we're talking about now. Before doesn't matter.
Still happening now.
I mean
People in business use, have totally one hundred percent business, put a residence, have a business, and they get taxed, mixed use.
Did this happen after the bylaw was enacted?
It's still happening.
No. After the bylaw was enacted?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so mixed use. Perfect, all right, it's them, regulations.
First thing that comes out of me, Peter, is existing structures. Thirty-fourty-nine, ten.
I'll read on, but
Yeah, well, infill development as well. Carrie, is, isn't all of William Street business zoning now?
Mixed.
It's mixed use.
It's only mixed?
It's mixed use.
Okay.
Part of, part of it's business.
Part of it is business. The northern part, where your building used to be, two hundred.
Yes, from where the street to the town line.
Yeah.
Where under the silos.
Yeah.
Where part of the street.
Just another question, too. The driveway is going to be kind of narrow with the residence and the business.
What do you mean?
I, I, you know, I go by the
No, no, I just don't understand what you mean.
The driveway, the, the entrance.
Right, it's twenty-five feet wide, so that cars coming in, cars coming out, they can pass.
Yeah, it looks narrow, though, when I drive by and look over there, it looks narrow.
I took a measuring tape to it, it's seventeen feet right now.
It's seventeen feet?
Right now, yeah.
Yeah, that's now.
Right, I agree.
Right.
And that's why I'm, I'm going to make it twenty-five.
Oh, okay.
Now, I don't see a difference between a car coming out of the resident or a car coming out of the business, how it would make a difference. If the car going out to the road or
What's the scale on this?
Uh, this isn't to scale.
So this is
The problem is
This could be a hundred feet, it's not the scale. I mean, it doesn't, this isn't the scale, this just says driveway. It's not fifteen feet, it's not twenty-five feet.
Right.
It just says driveway.
When I sent this out to this layout, this is to scale to the building. It's not to scale footage. If you want to go to scale, this is fifty feet, that's twenty-five feet.
You know what I'm saying, is a car could be pulling in and pulling out at the same time.
Correct.
That's why they need to be a little more width, that's all.
Right, now, I was just saying, it doesn't matter whether it's residential or business car, a car's a car.
Right, but I'm saying for safety reasons.
Right, no, no, I agree.
Yeah.
I just say the reason that the car's coming in or out, really doesn't matter what's coming here or going there.
I don't care where they go, but I just
Exactly.
As long as we get enough room.
The way you have this laid out here is, what are those black lines?
This here, this would be the driveway. So, cars can come in, people in mobile home can park over here, I can come around the building if I want, this would be the parking spots for these cars.
Has the fire department looked at this at all?
Yes, they've not looked at this plan, they've looked at what's going on right now.
Carrie, where is Appendix B?
It should be, if you go
What's your age?
No.
Okay, so.
Yes.
It's not going to be a house, though, it's just going to be a structure.
Okay, so is twenty-seven thousand square feet in change?
Yeah, right.
So, here's a permitted use in a, in a residential mixed-use zoning.
Okay.
A business. Other permitted uses in a residence district, minimum lot area, thirty-five thousand square feet. So if that's twenty-seven thousand square feet, this is a discussion we should have had in, in November, but we're having it now.
We weren't talking about putting up any buildings in November. In November, we were talking about North Dayton Garage moving the dealership here. And then going to the selectmen, and everybody being upset about it being totally commercial, to go residential. So, I'm trying to keep the residential here.
Understood.
If that's a problem, I can go four thousand square feet, actually, I can go nine thousand square feet, and just put up a large commercial building.
The minimum lot area for other permitted uses, such as what you're describing, is thirty-five thousand square feet.
Yes.
You say that is twenty-seven thousand in change.
Correct.
So no, you can't.
This is a lot that's been grandfathered, yeah.
It's been grandfathered for the mobile home, but not for a two thousand square foot building.
So I can't put up this two thousand square foot building?
We're going to have to, have to, have to discuss with Town Council, I, I don't see how
I think if you put them together, that would work.
What?
The mobile home.
This and this? This lot is twenty-seven
Well, leaving the lot alone and adding that to the mobile home.
This lot is twenty-seven thousand square feet.
Correct.
The entire parcel, not just where you add the buildings?
Entire parcel.
The entire parcel's twenty-seven thousand square feet, so no matter what he does on that lot, it's not going to, it's, it's not going to work, because the lot
So if you
The fact that it's, it's in now
But
It may be grandfathered.
The mobile home exists.
The mobile home exists.
Any additional structure would not be valid.
So
Now, the, the move of the dealership has already been approved, and I've got conditions from the selectmen of what I need to do. You're saying I can't do it?
I don't know. I, I think we need to have Town Council involved. I don't want to approve something that's not allowed, if you understand what I'm saying. When did, when did, you go before the selectmen?
Uh, in December.
In December?
Correct.
And here it's March?
Yes.
So, I understand you're under, under a deadline, but that's not our fault.
I can say that, well, you
I'm just, my point is, is that, that we need time that you don't have.
So what are you saying?
I'm saying that we're going to have to, have to discuss this with Town Council and, and find out where, where it is legally. Twenty-seven thousand square foot mixed use doesn't give you the right to put a business on it.
It doesn't?
Uh-uh.
I, I've already got the right. I've already got approval from the selectmen to move the dealership here. It is business as we speak today. So, we're talking past tense, it's already here. Now
Wait, with a two thousand square foot building is there now?
No, the business of North Dayton Garage Incorporated is here, it's registered to this property. It's it.
Okay.
So it's not coming in.
Oh, okay, oh, okay.
It's already there.
Okay, so
It's already there.
All right, I didn't drive by it today, I looked at it in Google Maps, and it was a field.
Right. And it's still a field, mobile home, field, few paths. But as far as the business coming into it, it's already there.
But the two thousand square foot building isn't there.
Correct, it's not there.
So that's where we, I think we need to have a discussion
Well, that's where the selectmen don't want me to use the mobile home, they're asking me, telling me to put up a new building. So, they're telling me
They're not aware of that.
I'm not aware of this.
They're aware that the dealership is here.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And they're aware that they told me in writing that I have to get a building permit.
But you may not be able to get a building permit, because it doesn't comply.
Well, it's like telling me to sit in a corner in a round room. Okay? You're telling me to go do this, I mean, for the second time I've been here, yes, it's March, I've been jumping through hoops all over the place. I've had to move, I would have rather stayed. Now, as far as I'm concerned, this is a grandfathered lot, whether I want to put a house on it, or whatever I want to do with it. I'm not looking to waste time. Just because it's not thirty-five thousand square feet, if I wanted to put a, a whole house here, I can. They're not going to say, well, it's non-conforming, because it's small. This is non-performing, because the size of the lot requirement, when this lot was divided, was not a requirement of thirty-five thousand. That happened afterwards, so this was here before.
But if you get rid of the mobile home, they'd probably let you build a house there. But I don't think
That is the second stage of the plan, which the building inspector has told me has nothing to do with you guys, that, that's residential. Tell him for the building permit. What I'm here tonight is talking about this building, I'm not talking about
Given you want both.
I already have this, and
Exactly, and then you want to add the building to it separate from that one.
I'm trying to keep it mixed use. If, like I said, if you'd rather me put a nine thousand square foot building up here, which I can.
Well, I I think you want us to cook the cake, and you're going to eat it, and then all of that good stuff.
No, I'm just asking to go by the guidelines of what I've been told, and all the hoops that I've jumped through.
At the very least, we need to speak to the zoning compliance officer, the building inspector.
I've already spoken with building inspector?
I haven't. I don't have any information to that effect in front of me. I have to speak to the building inspector, and I have to find out if what I'm, what I suspect about the twenty-seven thousand square feet versus thirty-five is correct. If he's not sure, then we have to go speak to legal counsel. I want to get it right, is what it boils down to.
I do, too, and I was under the assumption that that's what we come here for.
That is true.
To get it right.
That is true.
Not to go ask the building inspector, I've been back before for the building inspector. So, if, we thought we needed the building inspector, but what do we have on the board?
He is also the zoning compliance officer.
Correct.
And I want his opinion on whether what you are asking for is going to comply with our zoning regulations. Now, you say it's grandfathered in, but it's grandfathered in for a, a home.
No, it's grandfathered in as a lot, not as a home.
Okay.
As a buildable lot. The building inspector, call him to have him come in now, he's probably in Town Hall. He's the one that's told me to come up and, and to show you this, but now you're saying you want to go check with him.
Well, I'm saying
Is he aware of the lot size?
Yes, he's aware of everything.
He's told other people things, too, that were necessarily true.
Okay, so then if you go to him for advice, and now it might not necessarily be true, where does that land?
That means
Maybe you don't want to hurt your feelings.
That takes me to Town Council.
No, I think he's pretty straightforward.
Well, I think that's what we should go
Yeah, I, I mean, we're going to have to continue this.
Okay, can you give me the reason why it's going to be continued? Is it because you guys don't know, and you need to get further educated?
Yes, we need to get further educated.
Okay, so it's not my problem that
It's not yet, it's not your problem yet.
What do you mean yet?
Well, if
When, when will it become my problem that you guys are not educated about this?
When Town Council tells us that you are not able to put that building there, then it becomes your problem.
Okay.
And until I know that, I don't, I don't feel comfortable. I mean, we don't know everything on this board. I may have a master's degree in public administration, that doesn't mean I know every vagary about zoning, although I deal with it all the time, with Michelle. So, my point is, is that we have to take everything into consideration, we're not just going to rubber stamp what you want.
I'm not asking, I'm telling you that I'm doing what I'm told to do. I've gone to the building inspector, he's told me this is what you want to do, this is what the selectmen have told me to do, and now I'm here. And now you guys are telling me that you don't know. So I wish that they sent me to a board that knew what I can do and what I can't do.
Excuse me, I wish they sent me to a board, this is the board that you're at. If you want to argue about us being knowledgeable or not, that's within your right. It's within our right to continue this till whenever, is that what you want us to do?
I make a motion to continue this
Till whenever?
To the next meeting, or whenever.
You want to do whenever?
The next meeting.
We can do whenever, if you want.
The next meeting.
Well, until we hear back from Yeah, we'll go next meeting.
Yes.
So you'll hear back from Legal Counsel before the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Can I have that in writing, so I can send it to the selectmen? Because I need to give them a reason why I'm going past
We'll send them an email.
You'll send it to them?
Carrie will.
Okay, can I get a copy of that?
Carrie can grab a copy.
Caution, C.C., according to Mallory, we can give them an extension.
Once?
Once.
Also, the Board of Selectmen.
I believe I'm
That's not clear either.
I read that somewhere.
Says right here. Yeah, about an extension, one-time extension.
Beyond the applicant's control, and this is absolutely beyond your control.
Correct, correct.
So the next meeting is what date?
March twentieth.
Okay, so that is the date that it will be continued.
Okay.
We'll grant you that extension.
And we
But I'm only granting one extension, what, what if I go to the next step, and they want to bring to Legal Counsel?
That's not our problem.
Their, their counsel is our counsel.
Okay.
So, whatever decision Town Council makes, that's what we look for. If I had to vote up or down on this, I'd vote down right now, because it says existing structures.
What, what is it said about existing structures that makes you feel that way?
It says the purpose of the mixed-use zoning district is to encourage redevelopment, full use of existing structures. Doesn't say anything about new construction, says existing structures. I would vote down on it.
So you, in your opinion, I should just use the mobile home existing structure for the office?
Well, we're also going to require, too, if we, if we attach that to that, is that an option that would
I, I, I fully agree that if you were to add on to the existing structure, then they the zoning would, would carry on, I think. But for you to add and almost separate the entire parcel from one to the other, I, I'm not in favor of that at all.
Well, the rea, the reason being is to keep the residents near the residence. Renting out a place, I think it'd be quieter, and they'd be by themselves, rather than being attached to a building, that's a business.
You know, I, I understand that, but honestly, it's not, it's still beyond the
When you really come down to it, you get the same amount of square footage, whether you put it here, 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 connect them, or not connect them.
Okay, but
That's my opinion, they're the same amount
We'll leave it up to
But really, you want to build a house there anyway, because you already said that.
No, I'm going to replace the mobile home.
With another mobile home, or
A mobile home, or manufactured home.
Modular home, so another home.
Something like that, or rebuild this one.
Right, so that's your plan, you don't really want to add on to that if you're going
No, I don't want to add on to this, because that's an old, uh, mobile home. I want to put up a new structure, like the selectmen have said, they want me to put up a new structure, so I said, okay, I'll put up a new structure.
So why don't you build a new structure and get rid of the mobile home, and add the living area, which is what your first plan was, I believe.
Because
Was to build a building.
Then it becomes
Mixed use.
No, it's mixed use now, this is, this is next.
You got two structures there, that's my problem.
There's a lot of two structures on, on, around this town.
I'm sure there is.
Lots of them, there are, there's, there's lots of them now.
I'm sure there is.
Oh, okay. So, now we're debating whether you can have two structures on one piece of property.
You can't.
You can't? Go around town and see how many structures
Two residences, rather.
No, you have two residents, I'm not asking for two residents. I have a residence, mixed use, residence, much.
I have a feeling that you want to argue this until the cows come home, and I
I'm going to argue it until I get the permits.
I am not
We just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing for the town and for you.
Exactly.
That's all.
Exactly.
Okay, well, he's
You don't want us to deny it tonight, so take the, you know, wait till our next meeting.
I just want to clarify something, you, you tell it arguing. I'm going for my rights, and yes, I'm going to stand up for my rights.
Sure, I don't blame you.
If you want to say we're arguing till the end, I don't know
But it's not going to be tonight.
Then it's going to go on an extension till whenever.
The twentieth. March twentieth. We hope to have some
March twentieth, you're going to make a decision. If that decision is no, then it goes on, so the decision right now is till whenever.
So
I have one extension, I'm not going to take an extension from now till next week. I'll take an extension from now till whenever the boards get together, decide that it's okay.
You'll have an answer March twentieth.
What's that?
You'll have our answer March twentieth.
Your answer March twentieth.
And the two things that we're asking Town Council is, can two buildings be allowed in, in mixed-use zoning?
Non-conforming lot.
And, and, and is the, is the minimum dimensional requirement thirty-five thousand square feet for mixed-use zoning? And if, and can
If it was, I think it would be in your book.
It is.
It is, it's
I just read it to you.
Well, new structures.
Well, again, we need legal, legal advice.
Okay. I'm trying
No, I understand.
Okay, I will come back here on the twentieth.
I'm going to second Joe's motion, if it hasn't been seconded yet.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a, a set of those plans on file here?
You can have these if you want.
Yes, because
I mean, but it says it, not see a This is to scale as far as twenty-five feet, fifty feet, that's ten by forty, that's all to scale, it's not to one inch to twenty. But if you want to calculate
Could you, because we have other people here, could you maybe go to one corner of this table here and write in the, the dimensions, so that we could show that to our engineer, the legal counsel and stuff, so that we have the right thing on
Yeah, how about if I print it on there, and I'll drop off a print tomorrow, we go as a
You're, that's even better, perfect.
Okay, I'll put all the thing on there, and I'll drop something off tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Peter.
Okay, next item on the agenda. Is, I presume, discuss an act on TriCorp LC's twenty-two eighty-one Cedar Street site plan. David Ward, you think?
Right.
Okay, sit here, uh Yeah, let's please do.
I'm John Granier, I'm a civil engineer. I was hired by TriCorp for a building, a surprise building
By the way, I'm here to join
I'm sorry.
I know a mobile home on it.
Um, not right now. We'll be back in a couple weeks with this.
Yeah, that'd be a better idea to do.
What he is proposing is a, a his is
Oh, yeah, lens.
Oh, that lens.
Okay.
In the back in the field. This is the field that, this gets mowed, it gets hated. What he is proposing is a, or seven four hundred square foot garage building, an accessory garage to store some of his materials, garage, you know, some vehicles occasionally. So it's an, just an accessory garage building for the existing use on the property. That's really the long and short of it. He's not proposing any office space, anything that would generate any new vehicles, it's just strictly a storage building.
There's going to be no bathrooms there.
No bathrooms, just a, really a seventy-five by ninety-nine square foot garage.
So, section fifty-four sixty, minor site plan. Applications for purpose to build, alter, or expand any non-residential building, structure or use in any district where such construction will not exceed So, section fifty-four sixty, minor site plan. Application for permits to build, alter, or expand any non-residential building, structure or use in any district where such construction will not exceed a total gross floor area of two thousand square feet, or will not generate the need for more than ten parking spaces shall be deemed a mi- minor site plan.
Correct.
That is a seven-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-two-square-foot garage.
Correct.
That is not less than.
And that's why, but it says or, or will not generate, so it's one or the other.
No, it's, it's not one or the other. It's. You could have a one-thousand-square-foot building with a hundred parking spaces.
And that.
That requires a major site plan.
Correct.
And you can have a seven-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-two-square-foot building and no parking spaces, and that requires a major site plan review. That's the way I read it.
It, it.
Back to the attorneys.
Uh, yeah, I, yeah, because the way that, it has to meet one criteria or the other. And the criteria that it meets, in our opinion, is that it does not generate more than ten parking spaces. Now, if he wanted to do a seven-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-two-square-foot building and have office space in it, that under zoning parking would require twelve parking spaces, he'd be thrown in.
Yeah, right.
Where it's a garage building and it meets the criteria that it doesn't generate ten parking spaces, so it needs to meet one criteria or the other.
And we're not gonna have any employees there. It's just, it's gonna be for storage. Not gonna have a bathroom there, not lights. And we've already been through.
Not gonna be a work area.
No. It's not gonna be intended for that at all. And basically, we've already done all the parking for the other two buildings as an accessory use. That's why we looked at fifty-four sixty, it says or will generate the.
Forty.
No, less than ten parking spaces, but we're not gonna need car- parking spaces. We're not gonna need them at all.
Yeah, I, it's, you know, it says or.
Plain English doesn't seem plain when you're talking about all these regulations.
Seems plain to me, but.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, 'cause or means something else, you know what I mean?
It has to meet one or the other.
Yes, and it doesn't mean less than two thousand square feet.
No, but.
But it says or.
Yes.
So it, it only needs to meet one of those criteria.
It's either that criteria or.
Oh, so you're reading it in the positive, I'm reading it in the negative.
That makes sense.
That's exactly what it is.
No, but if you read it, I think it's pretty.
As long as it meets one of these criteria, it's a minor.
I don't know. I, I.
I agree with you.
I understand what you're saying, but I.
Did you read it completely?
I've read fifty-four sixty. I've read the whole, the whole thing in front of me.
Yeah, then when you come to, it's this criteria or.
If it meets the other criteria, it's a minor. Now, say, down the road, he went to, and I'm just throwing this as a, as a practical matter. Say if he went to go, say, you know what, I don't have enough office space. I'm gonna go turn this into office space, put a mezzanine in. Well, that change in use would then, he would have to go to the building inspector. That would throw him into something that was more than ten parking spaces. He'd have to go in for major. But we're just a garage building, and he's only meeting, and he only needs to meet the criteria that it doesn't need more than ten parking spaces, it would be minor.
We're not gonna hire any more employees for it. It's just I don't have place to put stuff. I don't wanna leave it outdoors. I got an old forklift and a man lift and stuff that I wanna get out of these buildings and put it over and out.
Carrie, you having an opinion?
An opinion?
Or, or, or any, any, uh, other precedents that you can think of?
I have not been able to find any other precedents. Um, I did send a copy off to our engineer, and he questioned the minor. He questioned because of the, the square footage.
So if our engineer is, is questioning the minor, and I'm questioning the minor, I think that, that unless this board wants to vote on it now and, and not question those things, or, or maybe or, or vote it down as a result of the questions, I don't know, then it is my opinion that we should have an attorney tell us so that we're not relying on engineers to read English. Legal regulations, like let's say.
Right.
We all can agree it does say or.
Well, yes.
And if we're not hiring any employees, we're not putting any employees in there, we're not putting bathrooms in there, we're not.
Let's, let's read it differently. Addition for permits to build, alter, or expand any res- non-residential built- building, structure or use in any district where such construction will not exceed a total gross floor area of two thousand square feet, period. Same words.
There's no period. There's a comma. And it says a comma, it says or.
Okay.
A period means it's the end of a sentence.
Yeah.
Then it says a comma, or will not generate the need for more than ten parking spaces, shall be deemed a minor site plan.
It, it's a, it's a.
Clearly says that.
Well, it's clearly something that an attorney needs to tell me that, that, that where, that you are right, or that, I mean, I'm not, I don't know if you're right. I'm doubtful.
All right, well, it does say or, yeah.
I understand. I understand, and I'm interpreting it.
Okay.
In the negative, you're interpreting it in the positive. You want it to be interpreted the way you, you think is correct.
Well, we can't do type of person.
And I understand that.
I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to rewrite the bylaws.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that. I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to, to, uh, hold you back in any way, except as it relates to legalities. And I want this board to do things legally. And, and if there's a gray area such as this, it's just a simple matter of getting our attorney to, to, to weigh in.
Okay, well, 'cause I, I did, I had my attorney weigh in. I used to use Mark Anton. I talked to him, he's retired and everything, and he says, yeah, you're correct. It says or. And he says, you, you, you know. So I talked to my lawyer, I guess, then you need to talk to your lawyer. I understand.
I think that makes the most sense.
That's what I wouldn't do unless I talked to my lawyer, 'cause that's what he did. You know, he's retired now.
He sent you anything in writing?
He just said he's retired. He says, I, I, I said I'm correcting what I was saying.
All right, well.
Because I don't wanna come do this if I'm incorrect. That's why I talked to him first. I have a lot of respect for him. He's a real good guy.
I know.
And I don't wanna do this unless.
He's not only a good guy, he's a very good, was a very good.
He's a very good lawyer, still is.
No, he, he's done all my work in the past, and I says, could you, I go, am I correct in terms of, and he said, yes, you're incorrect. I didn't, I didn't wanna get a lawyer, so I didn't wanna go.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. But just as you wanted to talk to a lawyer to make sure you had it right, I wanna talk to a lawyer to make sure you had it right.
And just to kinda give you the overall, the, the entire areas surrounded by abreviating. So he has, you know, evergreen screening. Any lights that he put on the buildings, we're showing them near the overhead doors. Um, he has existing cutoff lights, so it just fills light down. So he'd be using cutoff light fixtures, so. And obviously, he's meeting all other zoning, yard setbacks required, rear yard setbacks are thirty feet, he's at about seventy.
Actually, that, there's a question there on that. Far, uh, back corner there.
Mm-hmm.
What is that between the abrevieties and the, uh, no, back, yeah, right there.
That's an interior lot line.
That's an interior.
No, I, I own all of this.
He owns all of this.
Okay, but the question is between the abreviation and the corner of the building, how much space is there?
Back here?
Yes. I would say that the fire department is gonna wanna look at that. If there's ever an issue that they have to get back there, there's gotta be.
If that's the case, I can move the fence. I own the land on both sides of the fence. And it's the same zoning.
I'm, I'm just bringing that out.
So I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have a problem.
Because that has come up in the past with other buildings, and that seems to be awfully close to the, to the abreviated corner, and there's no way that a uh, fire truck could get in there and, and get around that building.
Right.
But we could easily change that. That's not, that's, I would not have.
What is the distance to the other side, to the, to the?
I believe it's.
From here to there.
That's seventy feet.
On the back.
Seventy, oh, just about seventy feet.
Just, yeah, so that should be enough. You, normally what they require is a three-foot radius, uh, around the building.
In the meantime, we'll double check.
Okay.
Just to make sure.
And check with the chief.
If, if the chief wants that, I wouldn't have a problem, 'cause we own the land on both sides. You know, we own the whole parcel.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just bringing up another, another issue, so that if that becomes, you know, comes up later on, I don't want you to go, I gotta go back and see those, uh.
I'm gonna work with you. As long as it's part of the bylaws and it makes sense, and we, we can accommodate you, we'll do anything.
How soon did you wanna get it going? Soon as possible.
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
Two weeks, Hertie?
Well, it's not gonna be the end of the world, though. I just gotta get the building on order and stuff like that.
I don't see a problem with the plan. Again, I just wanna make sure that we're.
Understood. I appreciate it.
It's not.
Okay.
You own all this land. What's, what's the big deal?
'Cause I think everybody's leaning to say it, it's a minor, but.
Okay, if you wanna get clarification, you know, again, we don't want you to do anything that you're not allowed to do.
Yeah, and if.
I'm gonna do it right.
I don't, if our attorney says that, yeah, maybe, maybe, then we'll pick a vote and we'll figure it out.
Okay.
But if our attorney is, clearly says it requires a major, then that's what it is. We'll find out.
How do you think we can get that information?
We will ask tomorrow?
'Cause it'd be, how do I say this? Time is a little of the essence. If the lawyer, the legal says, we gotta do the full, I'd like to get on the docket for the next week for the full.
Right. So we'll ask tomorrow and we'll see how quickly we can get it, get an answer from.
Yeah, you know what I'm saying? 'Cause I'd like to get on the docket. And we were gonna do full site, but I just said, you know, I saw the or, and I talked to Mark, and he says, hey, this or is an or. It's two different statements, you know, and he said, I was correct. You know, it's his opinion, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
You know what I mean? We all have different opinions, you know. But I wanna do it right. I wanna work with you folks.
And you'll be setting a precedent. But for the next time, we won't have to deal with this.
I was wondering where you're going with that.
We're learning. We're.
It will be a precedent.
It will be a clarifying.
A clarification.
Circumstance.
And what I'll show you too, I don't know if, your lot is right here.
Oh, yeah.
It's right there. It's all, the whole property is mixed use. This is right, right, and I got it offline for the day, and it makes use of Cedar Street. So we're talking that lot right, right there. It's either one.
There's plenty to build a house on there somewhere.
I do not wanna live up to my business. I wanna get away.
We, we know we can get one cheap.
All right, so how do you wanna proceed?
I think we should, uh, make a motion to continue to the next meeting. So.
So I think, do you think I could get, um, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Advance notification?
Yes, as soon as we find out, we'll, we'll let you know.
Okay. Do you have my contact information, Carrie?
I have your email.
You have mine too.
Yeah, if you could, I appreciate it. Thank you, Carrie.
All right.
Hey, thank you for your time for a little.
He actually does.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Hey, I appreciate your time, Chris. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good seeing you. Yep, we'll see you.
Okay, solar bylaw amendment, the next item on the agenda.
All right, so the last time we were checking, we were looking into potentially, um, amending our solar bylaw to be a little more strict on the the scenery from the street.
Setback.
Yes.
The setback and whatnot. So I did some research and, um, found a couple that are a little more, um, strict, so to speak. So if you guys wanted to go over that. So, and I also took the liberty, I know there's been some discussion back and forth about some concerns about some, um, solar farms coming in clearing land as well, um, as opposed to using what's already open fields. So I didn't know if you wanted to discuss that as well.
Are there towns that, that only allow it in open fields?
Well, I found two, um, that had a pretty particular, what Fairhaven has a very strict, um, Fairhaven. Yes, the town of Fairhaven has a very strict bylaw with their solar. Um, and I actually spoke to their town planner today. And in their bylaw, um, it's, they have basically what he called a moratorium. Um, clear cutting of trees and natural vegetation within five years shall be prohibited from construction, operation, and maintenance of solar prophylactic facility. So basically, what happens is if they go into a piece of property that has forestry, because he explained to me, a lot of these, um, solar companies, what they're doing is they're going to all these properties that are in forestry, because it's cheap land, and they're clearing all the trees. So he's saying what you're seeing in your town coincides with that. And they foresaw that. So when they wrote their bylaw, they made sure they put that in. He said they haven't fought it. Man, there's been a couple solar companies that kinda dispute it. No one's challenged it. Attorney general approved it.
So, so if I go and clear a twenty-acre lot, I gotta wait five years to put a solar?
Yep. You would have to wait five years. So what they do is the town, the Fairhaven, whenever they get a, um, a permit or a application for a permit, the location, they go in and they do the research and see how long, when's the last time that they had cleared, how they go, they cut it down or whatnot.
So if they, I've got a wooded twenty-acre parcel. I go before the planning board for a solar array. It's approved. Now I gotta wait five years?
You would have to wait five years. Um, so, but typically, he says what happens is it's a deterrent. So what they do is they say, okay, well, this one needs to be cleared, so we're not gonna consider that one, 'cause we'll have to wait five years. So then they move on to the next parcel and find another parcel that's already cleared. So basically, that's what he said. It's more of a deterrent, so that they're not looking at these forested, uh, properties. Um, and they're looking at properties that are already cleared or.
Fairhaven.
Fairhaven, um.
Seems to me that if we had a similar bylaw, something along those lines, and some landowner had an option of either waiting five years to put a solar system in, or subdividing it into thirty buildable lots.
They know what they're gonna do, guaranteed.
They're gonna go with a thirty buildable lots.
So it seems like it could be a deterrent.
On one hand.
On the one hand, but for solar, but on the other hand, screw up in development.
And solar is actually better for the town.
It is better for the town.
It is better for the town. Now, he did suggest, and I did find another one from another town, yes, and from another town who put a restriction on instead of being a complete non-level, they, uh, clearing of natural vegetation shall be limited to fifty percent. So they limit the amount of forestry that they do, or the, the clearing of the land. He said that could probably, 'cause he mentioned the concern that that, what you just said. He said, so what you might wanna also consider is maybe putting a limit on the amount that they can do. So instead of just, um, the way our bylaw is, we don't really have anything to control, um, the clear cutting. You could put a simple limit on there. He says some towns, the one town I did find, which was in Bridgewater, they limit only, um, fifty percent of the total site. And he said, you know, some towns, he knows of some towns, and he couldn't remember off the top of his head, but there was some, one town that was like twenty-five percent, you know, he, he said, you could do whatever you wanted. He said, it's definitely something to take a look into, um.
In most cases, this town, any solar, uh, farm that's ever gone in, there is substantial amount of wetlands.
I was just gonna say, yeah, so they just.
Yeah.
Six and a half of those and the other, yeah.
Can't do that.
Keep clear cut the wetlands, so.
Right.
Unless they make it uplands.
Yeah, that.
Yeah.
Would have to say fifty percent of.
But do we really wanna do that?
No, I don't think so.
No, but we're looking for more setbacks.
We're looking to.
Well, this one here, it says we're abutting residential uses. It'll be two-hundred-and-twenty feet from property lines.
Well, I like that.
So, that, I, I was just touching upon that part, 'cause I know we were talking about that part. So going back to the original research that I was doing, I did find some, um, information. What Tom is just talking about was just some of the setbacks, the screening, um, from other surrounding towns that they had for consideration. So for example.
Do a combination of all, like fifty percent cutting.
All of them. Yeah.
Two hundred, or whatever we decide for setbacks from residential districts.
Correct.
Plus complete screening.
I think the two-hundred, the two-hundred-and-fifty-foot setback.
There, you're, you're begging for a subdivision there.
Yeah, absolutely, you are, you are. And, and honestly, you're gonna cut out a lot of people that have this land. They haven't been able to do anything on it for God only knows how long. And now they're trying to, you know, better. And, and we're, we're cutting them out of it, uh, that way entirely. I, uh.
Go retreat lots of them.
Yeah, well, if, if it's allowed. I mean, a retreat lot, you need forty feet of frontage. In this case here, you don't. You need, all you need is twenty feet, right? So it, it's, and there is a lot of those twenty-footed, twenty-foot entrances. So it, it's, and there is a lot of those twenty footer, twenty foot entrances.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. I mean, I, I, I understand, uh, the, um, the idea of limiting the visibility and stuff like that. I mean, I wouldn't want one of those next to my house.
Hmm.
But unless it was my own.
Yep.
Hey, I'm just trying to be honest.
Yeah.
I think we gotta take the time and read some of these things and.
Yeah, so I did find a couple, um, for the most part, I mean, the ones that I highlighted, as you see, is where I found some more, like, the real language. Um, other than that, from the surrounding areas, I found basically the general language from what we have or nothing at all. So, um, so for example, like Berkeley, they don't have much of anything for screening.
It shows.
Yeah, that's pretty obvious.
And it clearly shows. Um, so it's either something as open as that or, um, pretty much the same thing that we have.
Well, the screening I read in these are, are pretty specific.
Yeah, like in a row of three point nine, point five, that's.
And any.
Rehoboth I thought had, was a really good one. Um, I thought it was pretty clear cut, um, and no room for misinterpretation.
Yeah.
Which I think, um, because I think even though, um, I think ours is, is good, um, because you, not to be visible, um, I think it's, the way it's worded, some, it is a little, um, I'm trying to think of the word. You know, almost like at the discretion of, so something kinda gives you a little leeway, which is fine, is good. I understand the intent of that. Um, but I think it rains too, it leaves too much open for the applicant to come in and say, well, you know, you, you don't have a choice. You're gonna see the top corner of that or, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, when it says they take steps to mitigate.
Yeah, reas- or reasonable, um, I'm trying to think of a word. I can't think of it off the top of my head right now. Uh, reasonable, um.
Efforts.
Yeah, reasonable efforts or something like that.
Yeah, that's, we wanna get as much gray out of these things as possible.
Exactly.
Like a little word like ore. It was red.
Yes, exactly, exactly. Right, so.
Boy, I felt that one.
Yeah, Rehoboth setbacks are seventy-five feet from the front, fifty from the side and rear are the odds. That's pretty short distance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I haven't done a lot of driving, driving around, but I don't, I don't even know if Rehoboth has any solar.
They do.
Do they?
They do. Uh, I know that, uh, they've had some approved.
Okay.
But you don't see them because of the, of the regulation.
Because of that, right. Which was another reason that prompted me, um, to this, to theirs, um.
See, it's funny, this one says, screening from view by a person standing at ground level from adjacent streets and properties.
That's nothing.
I know. Especially if it's a four-four person.
Up there. Sheriff Bidget here all set.
No, it's gonna be higher.
Can't take that word. Uh, this, this is crazy.
Little person, little, little person, yeah.
A large scale grant model solar facility including all accessory structures and that shall be visual screened so as the visible abutting streets and properties.
So our wording is.
But it does not say anything about structures.
Hmm.
Okay, so that's.
If you go on to read, it does, um.
It does say structure.
It does structures later on. I just didn't highlight the whole thing.
Shall shield the view. Indoor joint and cluster to avoid adverse structural impact.
So in our current bylaw, it says the abutting property shall be visibly screened to mitigate impacts to the abutting property.
Right.
So.
So we wanna get mitigated out of there.
Yeah, we wanted to, so yeah, you're mitigating it and the intent there is so that the neighbors are not being impacted by it.
Fairhaven is the best one, I think.
Yeah, Fairhaven or Rehoboth. I think Rehoboth was, Rehoboth was the one that I liked, at least.
Shall be screened from the view of persons not on the parcel.
But let's change the setbacks a little better for us. We have it at fifty feet now, right?
Yeah. Side is fifty.
Side is fifty, the front is at least seventy-five from the roadway, right, from the roadway right of way center line.
Oh, that's, that becomes fifty feet.
And that's.
Yeah, that's from the property line.
Exactly.
From the property line, exactly.
Right. So I think that's something, um.
Take out center of the roadway and make it property line.
Hmm.
Or go to under.
I would, I would.
Then make it a hun- make it at least a hun- what is it? Fifty?
A hundred, a hundred, plus screening.
Maybe a hundred all around, hundred all four sides, plus, plus three point nine, point five of the Rehoboth's bylaw.
The sides, why, why the sides?
Hundred feet, it's easier to screen. Right now it's fifty. The neighbor at, uh, Arujos' plan was unhappy with one fifty.
I don't think it would matter what we did.
Yeah, I know, but my point is that, that, uh, most of the other people were satisfied with one fifty. And I think if one hundred were the, were the, the minimum, then we could negotiate to two hundred perhaps. Or maybe, or, or negotiating a larger setback wouldn't be as critical a part of the equation. We spent how many hours discussing how much more we could increase the setbacks on it? And if we just made it a hundred, then the argument almost goes away. A hundred plus Rehoboth screening subsection would seem to me to be, be enough. It won't be enough because we're still gonna have people.
Still gonna have, yes.
Right.
Happy.
Yeah.
And we don't even know that the, the, the town meeting is going to approve it. For all we know, all the people that are solar array wannabes are gonna show up and vote it down.
Vote it down, yeah.
Unless there happens to be a subdivision, a, a solar array before us around that time that stirs up a lot of controversy and all the, all the neighbors come to, to vent that town meeting. So, you know, it could go either way.
Right.
Could we put something, a stipulation there that from the road and from any home, be the hundred feet plus the screening or whatever. But the sides, if it's just a body, abutting, uh, locked land or whatever, we should have the opportunity to.
We can waive it, yeah.
To waive that.
Yeah, like Arujos had two lots and they had to put the, they had to put the, uh, uh, setbacks on both those lots and it equaled a hundred feet. So that's how we got the hundred and fifty foot setback on the side, cause we waived that whole setback requirement for, for the two separate lots.
I just don't wanna make it a hundred percent. I think we should have the right to waive certain things on there.
Yeah, that should be part of the, that should be part of it.
I, I would like that.
The reasoning behind it makes sense.
Yeah, it's a special permit, so you can put that condition on. It could, it needs to, we can write it in too.
All I'm thinking is if somebody owns a parcel of land that's a thousand feet long, you take fifty feet of that, times a thousand, that's a lot of land.
Yeah.
That's a lot of money that these, that a person could be making off of that.
Right, but I agree.
And, and because that stipulation is there, we've taken that all away from them for no reason at all.
Yeah, that's true.
I, what do you, you can say with, you know, you, I think you've got something that.
Nope.
Nope.
As far as the waivers, it looks like you already have that.
I was thinking something else, Joe.
Yeah.
And we have, we already have the ability to waive, waive it.
Yeah. Notwithstanding the aforementioned setback requirements, the planning board, as appropriate, shall have the authority to waive setback requirements based on site-specific conditions and only after review.
So we have that already, so that's.
Do you have that?
Which is what we did at Arujos.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could say something like, uh, a hundred feet from the residential zone, but then add, uh, two hundred fifty feet from an occupied residence within that zone.
Mm-hmm.
So they can come down and they'll have to allow exemona space on the side of the occupied residence.
I like.
I'm sorry. You know, that way there, somebody, you know, uh, that we recently, uh, was concerned about the visibility, we just cut around his house. And it would be exemona feet away, so that's a thought.
I just like the idea that we, looking at plans, will have the, uh, what's the word? The, uh.
Flexibility.
Flexibility to, to actually decide on, at that time, what to waive or what not to waive and stuff like that. I think that's what, where common sense comes to play. And, um.
Yeah.
I, I, I'd like to see if that can be done.
Okay, that's your homework for next meeting, is it possible?
Yeah, okay.
No, it's already in the, it's already in the.
Yeah, the setbacks are already, the waivers of swa- set, setbacks are already in there.
Like if Joe Smith owns a hundred acre, two fifty acre parcels and he wants to put a solar system on one of the fifty acre parcels, he should be able to, look closer than, than the setback, whatever it is, to his own property.
Right.
Because it's only gonna impact him.
Right.
Cause his neighbor is Country Hill Drive, or perhaps maybe Country Hill Drive would prefer a solar array than a forty B.
You better believe it.
That ain't gonna happen. They already got a plan, Joe.
Oh, I know, I know.
An approved, or by the state plan.
Hmm. Hmm. So.
That was a little surprising to see that too.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, yeah, if you could, uh, maybe narrow it down to some language.
Do some language for proposed, uh.
For proposed, yeah.
Okay.
Based on what we discussed.
Okay. So it looks like maybe we'll just do a, an amendment. That's, um.
Yes.
Amendment for the setback or, and do you want me to add a screening section?
I think that three point nine, point five is a separate section.
Hmm, that's what I'm thinking.
You might wanna, I don't know if we can crib the whole thing or if we need to paraphrase it or.
Yeah.
I like to incorporate G on Bridgewater's. Not use D's, but G says, all structures included but not limited to equipment shelters, steward facilities, transformers, and substations. Shall be, maybe not architecturally compatible with each other. I don't know how to add in that, but shall be screened from the view of persons not on the parcel. Cause that was an issue with, uh, with Pine Street. They didn't wanna see or hear that.
Hear the, um.
What the hell you call it there?
They didn't wanna hear the transformers.
Transformers.
Yeah.
Inverters.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. So I'll say, I'm gonna put, I'm gonna put a couple of drafts. Okay.
Alright, no public here for input. Is there any correspondence that needs public discussion? We have not just signatures.
The other thing that I, I wanted to bring up is what is happening with the pumpkin farm with the solar.
The butternut squash farm?
Yeah, thank you.
I have not heard anything yet. Um, I've gotten a couple phone calls about our filing procedure and, you know, the timeframe. He was hoping to do March twentieth, but I didn't receive the application, so he didn't meet that deadline.
I don't know if we can actually discuss that without.
Right, um.
And Kerry, just as a note, I'm not gonna be here the first two weeks of April.
Okay.
April's meeting, I will not be here.
Thank you. Um. Um.
Need everybody's signature on this one?
Yes, please.
I'm not by that one.
So I do not, I have not received anything. Like I said, I've received a couple, um, in court, at least.
Did you find any other town that's had one of these?
No, and actually I even spoke to Fairhaven. I was talking on length with him. Um, and he said, that's really interesting. As soon as you get that, can you send me some of that information? Cause I've never heard of such a thing, so.
There is a town that, that was, I forget which town, I read it in the paper, that they have figured out a way to put solar panels above cranberry bogs.
Norton.
Norton, that's right.
It was Norton and.
But that's probably similar to this Washington.
It's similar. It is similar. It's a little bit different, um, cause I tried to get some information on that as well. Um, so I've been keeping my eyes and ears open on that one, um, so.
My issue is you can't see from the roof.
Yes. Um, the one in Norton, you will be able to.
But they have different regulations.
Cause if you go down the stream, they have a different regulation. Um, so.
And you would think that they're gonna have to set these things at minimum, ten, twelve feet off the.
Off the ground.
I don't know, I don't know how it's underneath the panel.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, if I have an umbrella twenty feet off the ground, there's a certain amount of it that is, is still gonna be shaded. So if I have a whole field of umbrellas, whether they're twenty feet off the ground or, or five feet off the ground, if they're budded up to each other like a solar panel, they're still creating shade, so.
Yeah, there is a, yeah.
The butternut vegetation's not gonna get its required sunlight.
The girls in the shade, that's the answer.
Yeah, it's one of those things, yeah. The girls in rocks.
Is it butternut squash?
Butternut squash or cranberry?
Butternut squash.
Butternut squash. Yeah, it's been timed, so.
It's up with growing a sidewalk.
So I did have a couple questions for you was at our next meeting, we have, um, the continuance of those two side plans. But we also have the public hearing for those three proposed retreat lots for Shaw. Um, I didn't get a chance to talk to you about that, or Tom. If you remember a while back, Mr. Shaw appeared with Maple Swamp Road and Oak Street. He wanted to do a bunch of formays as well as a couple. He submitted formays and, uh, retreat lots.
Okay.
So he's having a public hearing at our next meeting. Um, we also, um, so to finish that one, the question is, do you want counsel present for that and do you want the engineer to review those?
I think we should have the engineer review.
Definitely.
I don't know that we need counsel though.
Okay.
Well, um, there is one of, one or two of those. There was a question as to how much upland they had there. So I think by Peter reviewing it, that should, that, that, that will cover that because that looks like the wetlands are way too close.
It was, we can subdivide lots that are totally unbuildable because of wetlands. It really is not our purview, but we s- I mean.
Yeah, but we have to, to make sure that it's written not buildable. Uh, because if we, if it's not, if we don't have that on the plan, they can sell the lot the following day and done with.
Oh, yeah, most of the time we put, this plan does not con- does not.
Conform to.
Conform to, conform to either building or whatever the words are.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'd rather have Peter do it.
Absolutely.
Okay. I will make sure he does that.
And he's, he, he has to pay a thousand dollars for each retreat lot, right?
For the project review, mhm. Yep, so I'm gonna make sure I let him know.
Each lot.
Each retreat lot is a thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
That's why we're not gonna, well, you know.
You had the plans for that, yeah.
I do. Yes, I have them. They're right over there. So, um, the other question I have is.
I mean, I, I, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I saw the plans and I, I wasn't comfortable with them at all. Maybe Peter will be much more comfortable with it.
I saw them on my laptop. I, they look to, uh.
There's a lot of activity.
They look to inviting.
There was a lot of activity.
That's a good way to put, you know, so I, uh, so as long as you guys agree, cause I don't, I don't like the idea.
Yeah, they were, they were a little suspect.
Having people spend money for no reason at all, but I mean, in this case here, it looks awfully tight. Having people spend money for no reason at all, but I mean, in this case here, it looks awfully tight, and uh.
Yeah, if it were one retreat lot, it would be one thing, and we'd just look at it, and we wouldn't need Peter probably.
Right, right.
But it's a bunch of retreat lots and wetlands, and for all I know, vernal pools, and
Yeah.
and there's calculations of uplands versus wetlands, and there's too much involved for us.
Haven't had a chance to talk to you about it.
Well, I know about this, and I looked at it today.
Okay. Okay.
As a matter of fact, I've been thinking about it. I, I, you know, it meets our dimensional requirements, but I would, if we voted to approve, it would probably be with a condition that, well, just because we signed it doesn't mean it's a buildable lot.
Yeah.
We were just talking, yeah.
Period.
And we still may make that determination after Peter reviews it.
Yeah, at least on the form A ones.
There was one of those lots, it was a form A that
Goes way back, yeah.
Kind of at an angle, it looked like, oh, wetlands, I didn't look real closely, so.
Yeah.
There's a couple of problems.
Yeah.
Yeah, we probably shouldn't be, you know, discussing, but.
Mm-hmm. So the other uh question I had was, we received the subdivision plan for the Arujos, if you remember that one. They came to us about a year ago.
It's one where we waived the subdivision fee, because they had already submitted it, and it was just a matter of misplaced
We waived the subdivision fee.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
ZBA.
paperwork, or or deceased surveyors, or there was a whole host of issues.
Yeah, there was a whole, they had to get a ZBA variance, and then they didn't finish the whole process. So we have them scheduled for a public hearing on April third, and my question is, do you want counsel here present for that one?
Um, did he send out letters to the buddies?
That I'm getting that ready for. Hasn't gone out yet, because it doesn't go into the paper until, so they're coming in
Alright. Alright, so.
on the third, so that goes in the paper on the nineteenth.
I'm, I was just wondering, because I got a call today from a resident asking me about that.
Yeah.
Those notices will go out on March nineteenth, and it'll be published in the paper on the nineteenth of March.
Yeah. Okay, words out anyway, cause somebody called.
I got it.
I I found out today that the plan we're gonna ask to be looking at, to approve, is not the plan that the ZBA originally approved
Oh, boy, okay.
back then, so this is a problem.
Let's have town council.
Okay, I will have counsel here, um.
I was on the fence until you just said.
There's gonna be residents here, too.
Well.
Yeah.
Yes.
We had a stormwater meeting today, and we discussed that particular plan.
Okay. Okay.
And there's issues.
And Peter's taken a preliminary look at it as well, cause he received his copy from the applicant, and he's like, this is, there's three sheets, it it doesn't make sense, and he said, I've been kind of back and forth with the engineer. And I told, gave them a list, I was anticipating, oh, you would ask me that.
Who's the engineer?
Otis Dyer's office, um, so I had given them a packet, and I was anticipating the Form M, which is a list of waivers, anticipating a bunch of waivers, because it's, you know, two lots. And it's not a full-blown subdivision, and that came back blank, and I'm like, okay. So, and they really wanted to get the ball moving, and I said, well, this isn't, still really isn't, you're still not there yet, in the subdivision part, and I, it's kind of a form A.
Yeah.
So you're not really looking for a full subdivision plans, um so we just went ahead, went ahead and scheduled the hearing, and we'll just have to go.
Well, I'm gonna be in Florida.
Peter said, yeah, Peter said what he's gonna do is, he's gonna review it, and he's gonna come up with a long list of things that they need to update and and submit prior to the opening of the hearing and stuff, so at least they can have somewhat.
I think conservation's really gonna weigh in on this one, too.
Yes, so we're gonna have counsel here.
There's a number of issues.
Yeah, so that's it on that.
And I think the driveway is not big enough.
Yeah.
Although it says forty, I think it's let's see, one and eleven, eighteen and a half feet, so.
That's the legality, as far as stuff that's going.
Well, we're eliminating in vague terms, we're not, but we probably should.
Oh, it's just preliminary right now.
Twelve's still in.
Yeah.
Yeah. Make a motion to adjourn?
Oh, wait a minute, you gotta remove my minutes.
No, 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 no. Gotta approve minutes.
Joe, you know that's my job.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the minutes from February twentieth?
Joe, move.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
And lastly?
Joseph. Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
On favor?
Aye.
Good night, cable.